Uh, next would be case number fifteen dash zero four, Scott Porterfield, 107 Longview Heights Road, lot split. Uh, Mr. Paskey?
Yes, this one here is a lot split on Longview that is part of the, let me clear everything out, eight acre parcel, if I remember correctly. Um, it's a little bit confusing, so I'm gonna try to clean it up for you here. Like I said, it's an eight acre parcel that they're wishing to split off approximately 1.8 acres for a new lot, and then another smaller parcel that will be .931 acres that is going to a, the other properties. There's two large parcels there, they're brothers. Part of it, the smaller parcel is going as, to the brother, so that does not need planning commission approval, because it's a transfer of owner, continues, continues with property owners. The new lot is the one we're here for today, the Mr. Porterfield wishes to build a house on. The, the, some of the complications on this whole thing was the fact that the lots are partially in the city and partially in the township. Um, the city property lines go right through the middle of it. So, we've done a lot of research, I've been over to county auditor's office, and been told that it's not uncommon, it has two tax parcels, but it is one lot, as does all of these properties up in that area, Paul's included, actually. And, so, it, it's not an uncommon practice, I was trying to get some legal opinion back from them, if we should make them annexed in, make the entire lot, is one, but it doesn't seem like that seems to be an issue with anybody. So, it's very common, from what I'm understanding, around the perimeter of our city limits for this to occur. So, um, outside of that, uh, it's taught to Andy Stone, Director of Engineering and Public Works, the taps are available for this lot for new water and sewer, and everything seems to be okay, and on the up and up on it, so.
Okay.
Is the portion of the lot in question, the one that's 1.802 acres?
The 1.80, the first part of your packet, the 1.802 acres, is the new parcel.
Okay.
Hang on for this one here.
Right.
And then the .426 is another new lot that's being broke off on it, but it's, it's gonna join the brother's property to the, to the south of it, so. In essence, there's two splits here, but one of them is being held continuous and contiguous with the brother's parcel, which is perfectly acceptable without going through planning commission. But, since there is a new lot being created, that's why Mr. Porterfield is here today.
And the dotted line that goes through all these parcels is the city limits?
That is correct.
Okay. And these do have, uh, they're serviced by sewer system?
Yes, yes.
I was aware there's some parcels up in that area that are not, but for the-
Right, this, this one is, uh, and I think, uh, Mr. Porterfield tell you he's gonna probably build a house, uh, close to the street, not close to the street, but in an area where he doesn't have to put a lift station in to get into the sewer system. So, it, this, the, the structure itself will actually be within the city limits, on that, that part of the property.
Okay. So, the residual, which is, uh, to the, I guess that's the north, um, that's the one with the little brick house there, right?
Yes, correct, yes.
Okay. And, uh, I see our city planner is actually one of the adjacent properties to this residual. Okay, any commentary?
None.
Okay.
I learned, I learned as well, actually, that the, uh, uh, portion of my, I knew, I knew half, two, portion of my land was outside the city limits, uh, I was not aware that it was the same parcel, though.
Same lot?
The same lot, until we went through this process, so, um, I learned something as well. But no, I don't have any issues with it.
It looks like the frontage is eighty, what is it, ninety feet, which is-
Oh, it's much greater than that, uh, the new lot is-
Seventy.
Hundred sixteen, I think.
And it does meet all the minimum requirements?
It's a hundred sixteen plus eighty-six, so nearly two-hundred-and-fifty feet or so.
Two-hundred-and-ten, yeah.
Two-hundred-and-ten, yeah. And then, the ninety-foot parcel that you see is the one joining to the brother, to the south. So, it will be, like I said, held continuous and contiguous with, uh, that is already existing parcel. In essence, it's its current front yard.
And I see you have a designated number, I think I saw it in the packet here someplace? You have a number for the-
Yes, yes, yes. I, that'll, we'll have to do an address assignment, I have laying on my desk the application for address assignment, uh, stormwater, and use permit for everything, uh, for construction. Um, and I have contacted Athens Soil and Water Conservation for them to do a soil sample, just to get the report, in case he has to do anything special on his foundation.
Does that could say the slip prone in that particular?
It's on a slope, so I didn't let them determine if it's slip prone.
Was the, um, .426 already transferred down?
I'm sorry?
Was the .426 already transferred?
No. I'm, I'm doing it all at the same time, it's, it's, like I said, it's not part of this, as far as planning commission approval, but it's coming through at the same time, and Mr. Porterfield was here to represent them today as well, but that's not required to come here, so. But I've got it all in the same packet, not to confuse the whole situation.
I guess I've never seen this stamp before from the auditor's office, that's why I asked that.
That is, I, I went over there and talked to them about that, and they said it's very common, and apparently they're requesting it now of the engineer, or the surveyors that are doing this, um, and it's creating some problems, because property owners, and unfortunately for Mr. Porterfield, it created his problem, because he thought he had his approvals.
Well, it kind of looks that way.
Yeah, it does, and I went over and talked to them about it, and, and we'll see what we can work out with them, because the stamp is, that is coming from the county auditor's office is a little misleading.
I mean, it says preapproval, but then in bold it says approved.
Exactly.
So, the preapproval is approved.
If you don't reme, if you don't read the fine print, you kinda, yep, you're right. And it's created a problem on a couple of lot splits that are on my desk, here recently.
Is that because of the, the city limit line, is that the reason why-
They're doing it on everything now.
It's just the new-
Yeah, just, much like you have to go to the county engineer's office to get a stamp on it from them, the county auditor's office is actually looking to see, for their to once, they're doing the actual closure up from the surveyor to determine if the, it closes, on the meets and bounds of the property. So, they're putting their stamp on it, too, and so, this is something we're just gonna have to adjust to and work with them on, and, and hopefully, the surveyors realize that they still have another step to take after the fact, so.
Well, it does state that, all transfers are subject to the-
Right.
Conveyance standards, and it sounds to me like it may be an improvement in order to go through that process to know that it meets those.
Right. They're, they're actually gonna go to the county office twice now, but once is just a preliminary, as it states there, and then after it comes through here, it'll go back to them for recording and another stamp, so.
I think they had some issues a few years ago with some very confusing descriptions, where you might have, like, a small parcel of real estate that was, what was being surveyed, but then you had, like, fifteen different exceptions to it. So, from a administrative standpoint, it was very difficult for them to discern what was, what was included and what was accepted. We, I know we spent several days, um, probably about four or five years ago, dealing with some of the exceptions with some of the university estates, real estate, um, and we had to bring in title agents and surveyors to really sit down with us and figure it all out, because nobody was too sure what we were dealing with. And then there were some real estate conveyances occurring, and, um, they were, almost weren't sure what we were, what, what real estate was being transferred. So, they made some new policies on the description to make sure that they were not getting those issues down the road with other real estate.
Okay.
I think that's what we did.
Right.
It's been a while.
Somebody may have asked this already, but is it possible that Mr. Essex will have a, because it's a separate parcel, could sell that at some time in the future?
Which one, the, the, the little lot, the point?
Yeah, the one that you-
No, because one of the requirements, and it's in the deed that I have, that it was, is to be held continuous and contiguous.
Okay.
So, no.
Okay.
It'd be not conforming in size, would it?
That, that is correct, that's why it has to go with this existing parcel.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Would anybody care to make a motion?
I move, we accept, uh, the lot split of fifteen oh six, uh, no, we can say fifteen oh four, sorry, 107 Longview Heights, lot split.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is it unanimous?
Right.
Minus the one member who's not here. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to communications, the Integrated Services, Charles Street, Mr. Paskey?
Well, actually, both the communications-
BP station?
Well, both of them that are, yes, both of them are just that, they're communications today, so that's why you didn't receive any drawings preliminarily. Um, you do have packets in front of you of what they are. They will both be coming for Title forty ones, um, on May the twelfth, I believe it is, and three weeks from today, um, since this is a five-week month. The applications have been submitted to me, um, actually, we've already started our internal review, and I will be getting those reports out to you guys, more than a week prior to the actual review. But today, they're introductory, and they're for the applicants to, uh, pick, present the projects.
Is there anyone here? Just state your name at the podium and, uh, your address, or the company you work for.
Uh, David Moran from RVC Architects, uh, 131 West State Street, is our office. Uh, this is gonna be, it's on Charles Street, uh, it's over there where the car wash is located on those three lots. Uh, we're gonna be removing the car wash and putting a, uh, three-story structuring commercial on the first floor, uh, which is, it's a future commercial space, uh, I think the intent is some potential neighborhood health clinic type structure in there. Uh, the second and third floor will be apartments, uh, there'll be, uh, four single-bedroom apartments and three two-bedroom apartments. Uh, the, the footprint's about, uh, three thousand square feet per floor, and the third floor is more of an attic space, so it's a smaller footprint on the fourth floor. Wood structure, uh, we're currently dealing with, uh, in compliance with parking and all code, code issues, um, bike racks, trees, and everything else, uh, of that nature.
Are there any questions at this time? Just, why build a third floor, then? Just curious.
Uh, to make it viable, uh, for the, the number of apartments that they wanted to put on, on there, so. We, we were doing it to, the scale, to bring the scale down, the owner wanted that many apartment, built, room, uh, apartments, and, uh, we're trying to be respectful of the scale of the neighborhood, uh, so, uh, that's why. It looks like sort of almost an attic space, but it's, uh, but it's also a viable third floor.
For future, outside these bedrooms?
No, no, there'll be, there are four, there are four, uh, singles on the second floor, one double, and the third floor.
Space.
It has an elevator, it's, so it's handicap accessible.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Is the parking going to be, as opposed to the, uh, the last project, is all the parking gonna be enclosed?
We don't have to appeal for any parking spots, we have enough, uh, for the residential and enough, uh, for commercial.
I haven't done my thorough review on it yet, but preliminarily, it looks like it meets all bulk control requirements.
Okay. So, the square footage for the commercial space is going to be what?
It's just under three thousand square feet, probably two, two thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven.
Okay.
And it, that includes, you know, the elevator and stair shaft for the upstairs apartments.
Do you recall how much bigger this is than the previous project on Charles Street?
Than the, than the, the car wash? I don't know, uh, we certainly, it should be, there's a drawing of the outline of where we're removing the car wash.
David, I think I named the other integrated-
Not the other, the other, uh-
Oh, oh, that one, that one was a two-apartment building, uh, with a, sort of a townhouse, with the bedrooms upstairs. I'd, I'd say, uh, it's not double that, but it's, it's, uh, you know, at least a third more to-
The other one was a Title forty one, so that means it was over five thousand square feet.
Yeah.
This one's nine.
Yeah, nine total on the three floors, yes.
In terms of the footprint, I, um-
Yeah.
Okay. The other one, Integrated Services, was eleven gram, was it?
Yes.
Okay, so if I'm looking at the schematic here, that's eleven gram right there, that gives you an idea of the size in comparison. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if I remember correctly, they split the parking to across the street as well?
No, I think it was all on-
It's the other way around.
Yeah.
Some of the parking for the business was actually on the eleven gram, deed restricted over there.
I just have to ask, and it kind of applies to both of these projects that, you know, you're presenting in a communication today, is the whole potential future commercial space, um, did the laundromat go back and get their, you know, the deeds on Lycaster, their variance for residential's versus, did, did that not occur?
Yes, that occurred.
So?
If they were want to eliminate the commercial someday, it wouldn't be denied, and it would have to go through the board zoning appeals.
But this board zoning appeals could approve it down the road.
They could approve it.
Change of use?
Well, yeah, 'cause it's a permitted use in a, in a B three, it's just not permitted on the first floor, so yes, it could be approved. That can happen anywhere on Court Street, too, so.
And there are duplexes to the other side, or townhouses, or whatever you wanna call them, currently?
To the north, yes.
Is that what's, yeah.
Yeah. And I believe behind it, well, not, no, there's a commercial behind it, on the Euclid, is it Euclid that it is?
Yeah.
All right.
Is that the Rock place?
I think it is, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
Gemblaze or something?
This is a B three zone.
Yeah.
It is a business zone.
Trying to remember where this, the, there was R two, it's been downgraded to R one, if I remember correctly?
Yes.
And that starts how far back? The next lot over, now, Charles?
Um, actually, David, you're gonna have to probably fix that on your drawings, you're probably not aware of that, um, I just now noticed that on your adjacent properties went two-hundred-foot radius where it says R two, most of them are R ones now.
Okay.
What is the dividing line?
Sorry?
What is the dividing line for R two?
Well, if, uh-
R two used to be everything south of Jacobs that wasn't zoned B three. When the rezoning occurred, everything south of Jacobs that was zoned R two and was rezoned to R one, with the exception, I'm going off memory, of a handful of undeveloped lots that Pete Good owned, or maybe still owns.
He does.
And those were actually closer, a few blocks to the west of this location.
Wow.
I'm not sure which street.
So, in other words, five and six Charles are R one?
I believe so.
Okay, and ten?
I believe so, now.
And ten Euclid and-
Yeah, if, if-
But those are duplexes, I believe.
Right.
Grandfathers.
Grandfathers.
Right, and they're rentals, right.
So, this is the line right here.
Again, this is a B three.
Mr. Paskey, are there any concerns about, uh, growing density issues, then, in, in this section?
Well, it's B three, so, I mean, I, that was the talk back then, is to eliminate, eliminate the, the R two, so that was not an issue, and that was done, so, this is B three, um, so.
I believe at the time that this, when the rezoning occurred, some of these B three parcels, initially that the, um, some of the petitioners wanted those to be downzoned to R one as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then they retracted that-
Yes.
-after having conversations with the B three owners, I think.
Yep.
And then they moved forward and just asked for the R twos to become R ones.
Okay.
In fact, I think this was one of them, they proposed to do R one, and the property owner was adamantly opposed to it.
So, what is the timetable for submitting this as a Title forty?
It has been submitted.
Okay.
So, what we'll do is I'll, I'll begin my review on it starting next week, and we'll get the posting out on the properties by a week from today, and then, like I said, two weeks after that, I'll be here for the Title forty one review.
Okay, if I'm looking at the calendar, May seventh is the, we have two planning commission meetings, it'll be the first and third, my members correct?
It'll be the first one.
Okay, well, that's May seventh.
Is it seventh, okay.
Yeah, the other one is the twenty-first, I believe.
Okay, May seventh.
You, you said the twelfth, and I started looking at, well, it's Tuesday.
That's B Z A, I got confused.
Okay, yeah, that's okay. That's why I got confused, too, when you said the twelfth, that's why I was trying to figure it out.
I acknowledge that the, um, what would you call, the project manager, the owners, Integrated Services, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Not present here today, and in the past, um, had stated on the previous project that they would be communicating with the neighborhood, so.
He's, uh, he's been open to fielding, some citizens have called him with concerns, and he's met with anybody with them, he, he was out of town today, he will be at the May seventh meeting, so he'll be there, and, uh, anybody can call, they've got drawings over at their office, he's gladly take the time out to, uh, introduce anybody who wasn't present. He had initial neighborhood gathering where he introduced the project then, so. He lives in that neighborhood, his business is in that neighborhood, uh, they believe that the Grant, Levin Graham is a success story, uh, of integrating in that neighborhood, and, uh, and he continues to believe in this kind of, uh, service, so. And it's, the great thing is, it's close to, these people don't have vehicles and cars, there's bus lines, there's grocery stores, uh, there's the bike path, there's all these things available close to them, that don't have, uh, that they do not have cars for, that kind of-
And anytime we can increase our stock of affordable housing.
Yeah.
You know, for the very low or low, that's good.
Right.
And again, we'll have this, you know, worked out with the Title forty one, uh, as well as the fact that the, the wish of the neighborhood at the time was a downzone, and, uh, we're not changing the zoning, but by nature, we're changing the, the business, so the activity. It means we lose one more, I guess, uh, car wash, but, uh, you know, some people would say that's good, or some people would say that's bad.
They're kind of a drain on our system.
What?
They're kind of a drain on our infrastructure system.
What, car washes?
Car washes.
Years ago, I used to actually get quite a bit of complaints about the car wash with their shopping bags going at two AM, so, and they put a fence up there, and it actually helped, and I haven't gotten many complaints since then, but, um, so.
Yeah, well, it's, one time you know, there's gonna be a car wash, it's true. I guess if you're trying to clean up a body or something, a truck or something, maybe, or those detective stories or something.
No, this is also incorporating the BP or this stuff.
No, that's a dis-
So, are there any questions or comments about, uh-
I'd like to make a comment, I think those of you that are students might look at this and say, um, it is what it is because of zoning, and the zoning map has established the parameters that we're using, even though the lots are small. And the power of the initial zoning map and the difficulty of change, in my opinion, has to be noted, because this is a relatively dense settlement, or development on a relatively narrow street, but that's just the way I feel. I'm a neighborhood person.
And again, historically, this, there was a series of R twos duplexes above this to the north of it, and, uh, and the reaction of the neighborhood for the, actually, the first integrated service activity changed it to the R one, so we downzoned that section as a result.
Except for the ones that we couldn't, right? 'Cause I was on that.
Yes. And again, do you really wanna downzone something, do you want a R one facing right abutting, uh, East State Street? Although there are, Utah and Strathmore, I think, by deed restriction is there, and that can be shifted.
I guess I wouldn't worry so much about facing East State Street, because there are some out there, but I was thinking more about the, um, narrowness of the street and traffic turns, and I know we're all cognizant of that, it's just impossible. I think the, the main thing to point out is that it, once it's zoned, it has a value, and the value's increased, whether it's, whether it's usable and, or desirable or not. So, pointing out the obvious, I guess.
The teachable moment here.
The BP station, Court Street?
Well, again, this is, uh, an old communication, um, as you remember, they applied a while back for some variances to actually split the property and have part of it up on the corner of Carpenter and, and Grosvenor with their parking and their, the structure all at the side of the BP. This time, everything is on the side of the BP, they are actually going downward for their parking at a basement level, um, number of beds, uh, I can let them talk to that, but I believe the number of beds are thirty-five, is that right? Thirty-five beds, and, and then the commercial space on the first floor for the carryout that's currently there. Um, again, preliminarily, from my point, looking at it from bulk controls, it looks like it's gonna meet all requirements, and no variances will be required.
No variances?
No variances.
Okay.
One question before, when I first started on console a hundred years ago, there was discussion of, um, a very poor sub-sub area, where they had to put subsurface slots on caissons. That was true in the block just a bit south of this.
Mm-hmm.
Do you still have those explorations? 'Cause I do believe we funded-
I don't have them, but I'm aware of that.
You're aware that it's been a problem.
And that would be something they'll have to engineer, and I, you know, obviously, they're gonna have to get the buster report closed, because there is fuel pumps there, and, and I imagine they'll have to remove a lot of soil, because of the fuel pumps anyways, to, to meet the requirements for a buster, so.
Yeah, I was, what I was mainly thinking about, they usually call it quicksand, and it goes all the way to, um, Carpenter Street, and that's why I was concerned.
All the town, right.
I mean, you could think about how good it would be to do, to do this, but you really need to know what you're, that was a-
I would assume-
The share at a hotel on Court Street with the caissons, and that was enough to-
It's underground, I think it's just-
To end the project.
Right. I think it's ground level, isn't it?
Okay. Is it gonna be ground level parking, you said, or?
It says basement.
There'll be two levels of parking, the, there will be a first-floor parking, and then there'll be a basement parking.
Michael, can you guys introduce yourself?
Yes, why don't you introduce yourself?
My name is Mike Brothers, I'm with RVC Architects, number three, West State, State Street.
And I'm Penny Mullin with RVC.
Okay. So, access to the basement comes from where?
Court Street. Yep. We're entering at the lower side of Court Street, if you go to S D one point.
I think A one one is probably your best description of, yeah.
A one one, okay.
A one one.
Thank you. If you look, there's a ramp down on the, uh, upper left-hand corner of the schematic basement floor plan, and so you'll go down a little bit and into a basement parking, which has twenty-four spaces.
So, access comes off Court Street, goes around the north side of the building and down the ramp, or is it firm?
No. It's within the lot itself.
It's in the lot itself?
Kind of where their dumpsters are sitting now, it's very north end of their lot, on the北East.
Oh, I see.
That would be a ramp cutting off Court Street going down into the basement of the structure. I think there's a guardrail there now, isn't there, on that north end?
Yes, I think so. Yes, there's a guardrail, and we're, we'd replace that with a wall of some sort to-
Tangle wall.
So, is the entire first floor a commercial space, then?
Uh, no, the, on the first floor, there will be parking in the northern part of it, and then, on the southern part, there'll be a convenience store, and then they'll be putting a little bit of a rental space, so that they can, just to have an office to rent the space.
Is this similar to what occurred with Bellavino?
Identical.
That's modified.
Modified.
As opposed to an entire first floor being commercial space.
That is correct.
Again, as far as that, we never delineated what percentage.
I voted differently, so I don't know.
Okay.
First time. Okay. Are there any comments that you would like to make while you're up at the podium, in general?
We, we've also attached, I believe it's, uh, the last page in our little bundle, that, um, basically, that's what it would look like.
We, uh, previously have actually met with the historical, uh, group, and so the, uh, the commercial space up, sorry, the residential space up above, we're looking at doing brick, And then, down below, because it's a convenience store, we'd want to put some storefront and some stonework. We, we don't want to just create a box. We want to make it look like it fits with the neighborhood around it, where you have brick and you have some trim work and some nice detailing.
It looks like you've even incorporated kind of like a pedestrian plaza.
Yes. At the southern part of the building?
South.
Yes, right there in front. So that, we, we figure with the way that the streets are coming in, that's a perfect place to have a nice area for people to sit, even when the convenience store is closed. You can sit, talk with friends. Right now, we've noticed that a lot of students will gather at the gas station next to the gas pumps. And if a better space is created, I think that's more ideal.
The balconies are all in accord with?
Well, they're on private property.
They're on the property.
So, they're not out on a city roadway, so.
Yeah.
Not our.
I am curious about the other curb cut. Has Andy had a chance to look at this and say?
I gave it to him this morning.
Okay. There may be some recommendations from our city engineer regarding that existing southern curb cut. And then, there's one to the.
They're actually.
There, I think a large percentage of the curbs that will need cuts are already there. And they're, we're gonna be doing away with quite a few of them.
Of course.
Also, on A2.1, this elevation, you know, Court Street, where we have the railing you see, and then there's an open space. And we have been in contact with some of the community, what is that?
Passion works.
Passion works, thank you. To create and do some accenting, you know, and dancing of that. So, it's also part of.
So that it's not just what you're seeing there, which is a guardrail, that you do get some artwork and you get a sense of community pride versus just parked cars.
Do you have a copy of our Essence of Athens book?
I gave it to him.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
I wanted.
You know, we've talked about this, and we kind of have different perspectives, but, you know, I constantly get complaints from, you know, the, I'm saying in front of students, a large amount of student rentals compacted in neighborhoods and adjacent to them versus the uptown, which is kind of a vibrant, you know, area that it's kind of, we already had noise occurring in these areas.
You know that you're different with me on that.
I know. I was waiting for your opportunity to say where you live.
How tall are the rails on the balconies?
Forty-two inches.
That's the.
State standard.
Requires management.
And how many beds are in this altogether? It's so confusing to go through all these.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Fire suppression?
Absolutely.
And of course, it still needs shape treating and all those stuff.
Yeah, this is an old communication, I said. It's gotta go through the whole, the whole course.
And you don't think there'll be any need for variances?
My first take, I did it real quick before I came here this morning, because I knew, or today, because I knew you were gonna ask me that, is that ball controls, none?
And?
They have the proper setbacks, they have the right amount of parking.
Well, there's no setback, right?
B3 there is.
How much?
Ten fifteen on the sides, ten on the rear, unless it busts.
But I'm only worried about the front.
Front is zero.
Okay. Breath of my gaze.
Am I counting correctly forty-six spaces, parking spaces?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight?
And that, that it does account for the convenience store and the business as well.
Okay. Do you see any, and I know this is all preliminary at this point, any designated for loading and unloading? I mean, we're gonna have a transitory population here. And one thing you see regulated is, you know, somebody says, I gotta get in there and drive, you know, get in there quickly and get out. So, I assume most of these spaces are designated for residents. But is there combinations for the drop-off?
We do have a, a drive that enters into the first, the first floor.
From the east side of the building?
And that, that would, that would be where the loading and unloading, rather than what a lot of places do, which is just park on, on Court. We figure if we provide the space for them to unload, they won't impede traffic as much.
Okay.
I'm sorry, where's the loading and unloading?
It'd be the parking lot to the east of the building.
It would just be the drive.
If I'm facing the building, Dr. Miller, West Street's side?
To the right-hand side. If you're standing on.
East State Street.
I know how you are with directions. I'm trying to help you. If you're standing on State, looking at from that, it'd be between it and the parking lot, next to Passion Works.
Okay, yeah.
The one thing I did notice too, is you have 11 required parking spaces for the business and mercantile, and then 35 for the occupants. Then it says total spaces required forty-seven. Thirty-five and 11 is not forty-seven. So, you actually have two extra parking spaces. It should say forty-six.
Okay.
Well, at least that's not those.
Overdue requirement. That's what we like.
Timetable for this one? Same as the other?
Same, yes. The application has been made. I will start to review on it next week. We'll get everything posted by Thursday for the signage on the properties, and it'll be here for Title 41 on May the 7th.
May the 7th, okay.
Yeah, I got it right this time, right?
Yeah.
May 7th.
You're busy, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Well, let's see, the report from city planner, Mr. Lowe?
Just one or two things, I think, for today. We had been working on the, or assisting with the Ohio University Master Planning Process on behalf of the city. They had two public workshops this week. There was a Tuesday evening workshop and then a Wednesday afternoon workshop. Tuesday evening was on, at the Community Center, and last, and yesterday was at Nelson Commons. Both meetings, I thought, were very well attended. I think at the public meeting at the Community Center, there's at least 50 to 60 community members who were present. I thought they, I reviewed some of the feedback that they gave. There was a lot of very, very good ideas and comments put in there, some of which I also thought were, were relevant for, kind of, for us to be thinking about how we plan at the city and what we do as a community off-campus areas. Historic preservation, transit, were both mentioned multiple occasions. Strong town and gown relationships were key, working with local businesses, and there's also a lot about pedestrian and bicycling. So, all of those things are things that we've already been working on at the city. The meeting yesterday at the, at the Nelson, I think that was, that was more geared towards faculty and staff. There was probably about 45 or 50 people that, that attended. It's tough when you do an afternoon meeting, because people are at work, students had class, et cetera. There were very few students who, who attended. In fact, in fact, this morning's Post had an article wondering where all the students were. But the, the process is going forward. They should have a draft plan, I believe, for the Board of Trustees towards the end of this year. Mr. Stephen Golding and the VP for Finance, I think is his title, he stated in the Post this morning that there should be a few more public workshops ahead, or at least some sort of public information gathering. That's also, I may have talked at the last meeting, but the ridges master planning process is still underway. That will be, they've established a framework, they had a draft presentation on that a few weeks ago. And the ridges master planning process will be integrated into the campus master planning process, so that they'll both be coming out at the same time. Yes?
So, you know, in the city, the master plan is passed by the Planning Commission, then goes to legislative authority.
Correct, right.
In the university, I mean, we've, they used to come and report to us and talk about what they were gonna do, and then they come again another few years, and what they're gonna do then. What happens? How does that plan get passed? Is it the trustees?
It's my understanding it goes to the Board of Trustees, yeah.
Okay. What about those places where the university and the city overlap? I mean, this is much more.
Right.
Contiguous than it was.
There's a lot of discussion about the edges and where things connect. They had a few maps up that showed the, the interaction between the two. There's a lot of comments about the need for an integrated transit system for, like I said, pedestrian and bicycling issues. And there's a lot of discussion about the impact of historic preservation and how that's important for the entire community, not just for campus. Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, because it seems to me that if you have a plan that's been adopted by the legislative authorities.
Right.
It has a lot of stature, but the trust, I mean, it's, the other one may be a little loose.
Yeah, it definitely would not, in my opinion, a campus master plan doesn't have nearly the amount of authority as a, as a city's master plan if it's adopted by, by the legislative authority. It's not a government agency in the same way that the, you know, it doesn't have police powers in the same way that the City of Athens does.
Although they do have power over their land.
They certainly do, right.
But I guess that when I start, I guess when I start reading in the paper about this street changing and that street changing, I get a little nervous.
Understandably so, sure.
Yeah, okay. Point taken.
And there was, there was a lot of comments about Park Place and concerns over the closure of Park Place.
All positive.
I would not say all positive. There was a lot of people, especially, you know, at the community level, who do not want to see Park Place closed. And that was, I, I saw that several, on several occasions at the, at the meeting.
Well, I was, you know, I guess, let's go back, I'll expand on that a second. And when you think about the basic configuration of the city, you know, historic preservation, we don't even, we don't need to only talk about old buildings. You could talk about the way it's laid out.
Right.
With the campus and the old housing surrounding it. And it wasn't a pedestrian mall. I mean, it may have been, because there wasn't that kind of vehicular traffic, but, I don't know. I just kind of wonder, historic preservation is not only old buildings.
Joanne Chrisley was present at the meeting and.
And she let them have it?
She had a very good conversation with the Kevin Peterson from Air St. Rose. He's the principal in charge of the project, and very, about that specific issue and about the old homes there, and the layout and the formation of that entire district of the city.
And likewise, the blunted vistas when you drive around, I mean, it's strictly New England plan. You can see it, and yet, almost always, there's some effort to move, remove Hanning Hall. I mean, somebody's decided 20 years ago that should go. And so, now, there's a continuous emphasis on that.
Right.
Misplaced, I will say, because you understand, you feel, okay, I'm talking to the choir.
You are, absolutely right.
Okay.
I'm not speaking on behalf of the university on this plan, just communicating the planning process.
I would say it would be very hard to do that.
Right, right. They can speak for themselves on those issues.
Yes, indeed.
Sure.
Do you know if that presentation that they gave would be online or available to the public, I guess, or no?
From Tuesday evening?
Yes.
I'm not sure. I know our government channel folks were there recording some of it. I'm not sure how much detail they went into. And I don't, the presentation, I imagine, the PowerPoint at least, it's, it should be a public record, so we should have access to it if somebody was interested.
I found the one fascinating, where they did the time lapse and expansion of the campus footprint.
I did too, right.
Over the years. With the population, student population as well.
Right.
Just, just to see how it kind of ballooned up.
Does that include the rental property?
No, it does not. They did have a, a presentation of where they looked at the, the student housing to the north, southeast, west of campus. They looked at the campus capacity, but they had some numbers in terms of where the zones were. It was, it was fairly good in terms of what they're trying to say, where we want, you know, where we see the classrooms, research, open space versus athletic space. I think they're, they could have tightened up some of those things, but as an overview, I thought it was pretty good.
Right.
Again, there was a, one station there for, you know, Athens and city interaction. I think it was staffed by Donna Goss, I think, at the time, to address some of the interaction elements there.
Well, amidst all this campus master planning, you can already see that their footprint is growing.
Yes.
You know, doubt Union Street and additional other areas.
But as I say, it looks, you know, almost, you know, metastasizing real quick. So, that was my.
I think our concern, well, my concern as a citizen from, from almost 50 years' residence here is that, how big is it going? I mean, people have been asking that since the beginning. How big is Ohio University gonna get?
And I did feel some questions of how many of the residents felt that they weren't welcome. And again, it comes down to Grover Center, Ping Center, use of those facilities within the university, and, and lots of old, you know, historical baggage, so.
Yeah, I, I just think that, you know, even if you don't remember, that they would, they used to be able to use the tennis courts or things like that. I mean, most people would be concerned about the pressure, the population pressure on this town, as we can see.
My understanding is that they actually are looking at their, their parks and recreation as a component of the master plan. And I heard, I believe, this week that they may indeed start offering Walworth memberships at the same rate to community members. So, I have not confirmed that, but that'd be his staff. Mr. Lowe, was there anything else?
No, not at this time.
How about historic preservation? And I know you're working on a sustainability plan?
Yeah, well, I know, I mentioned the sustainability plan at the last meeting, and that's still going forward. We've been meeting about once every two weeks to try to really get it wrapped up. We're, we're close to getting a draft ready, but we're not, we're not there yet. But we're closer than we've been. We're, we're moving steady on that. The historic preservation, we are working, a few of us are going to be doing, we've got a few student volunteers this summer who will be helping doing, updating our historic building inventories. Mary Ann Reeves, our chairwoman, she's going to be doing a training for a handful of us next week, so we can understand better how to do that. And we did receive a grant from, I don't know if I mentioned this at the last meeting or not, we received a grant from the Ohio History Connection, which is a state historic preservation office, to do a market and use study for the armory. So, we'll be figuring that out, and it'll be an RFP being sent out within the next two weeks.
Okay. Who's actually mentoring that? Is it you or Lanza Buildings, or?
I'll be, I'll be putting it together, as far as the RFP and all that.
Okay, I realized, having discussions with our finance personnel committee members, Jeff right here, it was pointed out that we had in our tourism fund, $20,000 in the TC500 capital. And I had to go back and remind myself why I had that in there, put it in the budget, was for the historical markets and the Near East Side Neighborhood Association, the Near East Side Historical District, remember? We're trying to determine that. I had a conversation with your chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, Mary Ann, Mary Reeves, I mean.
Reeves, right.
She's stated that the, there's actually grants out there for historical markets itself. Do you know anything about that?
She's told me that before. I don't know, I don't know much about them, though.
I guess, okay.
But we're, we can look into that.
Yeah, maybe it's something, you know, again, that, that money's sitting there. And I, I had to go back and look and say, why was that there? Because it's been, well, I expected to have more drive coming out of the neighborhood, actually.
Right.
And issue coming up forward on that. So, I'm just bringing it up so we can, you know, because I forgot.
Yeah, that slipped my mind, too. We've been meaning to work on that.
Yeah, we've been busy.
Mr. Paskey?
Oh, you done? I'm good. Just give you a quick update on West Union Street. The applicants or the property owners have begun turning in their applications to me. Hopefully, they'll all be in by tomorrow through, for all five, if you want to call it, structures, being halves on some of them, but, and they will all be going through the Board of Zoning Appeals on May the 12th. That's the assignment that day for their, every one of them will be parking variances. So, right now, two of the five, and SS3, if you count the Uptown Grill, or, excuse me, the Union Bar and Grill, have submitted. They've already got their permit and begun their work. You've seen the dumpster and the portage on and out there. And then, the 12 and a half of 14 have submitted, and the other ones will be coming tomorrow. So, and then, they'll be going through to the VZA.
When is the VZA meeting?
May 12th.
So, we do meet prior to that meeting? We'll be meeting this summer?
Yes.
Would you want to talk about your initiative?
I don't know. We'll do it.
I don't know. We'll do it.
Okay, okay. We may want that as an item on May 7th.
I can, yeah, present. You know, at that time, I'll know exactly what the number of bedrooms were going to be versus what they were. I can put together a breakdown of each building. I don't know the total numbers yet. I anticipate that each one of them are looking to increase slightly. One in 10 is the Uptown Dog Building. It's, their proposal is to tear the building down and build a new building with apartments above it. They will have parking on there somewhat. I don't know how many beds they're wanting to put, but they have that little alley between them and the uptown.
Goodfellas.
Goodfellas, yeah, where they can pull back in there and park behind. So, they should have some. The other three buildings, though, are going to be rather difficult to have the proper amount of parking, so.
I think we recognize that somewhere else.
Yeah. And what Paula was talking about is the idea that if they're conforming to the historic preservation model, there would be, that would be a strong argument, as it was with the Phoenix Project.
Absolutely.
To grant them a variance.
And they are.
Okay. Because I've heard threats about, you know, walking down the street, so-and-so would say.
14 is being restored. 16 is being restored. 12, which is the Queen Anne, is somewhat. They're adding a third floor on it, so.
Yeah, well, and I have to give Guy Phillips a shout-out here because he's really been working, I think, on this and trying to coordinate it all.
So, yes, that is crucial, obviously. And I kind of did an introductory to the Board of Zoning Appeals members Tuesday evening after the meeting, let them know that it was coming and think about that very issue, so.
Maybe the Planning Commission could have urged them to.
I will bring what I can at the next meeting.
Okay, so there you go.
So, is there a pool out there who's going to get done with fire damage? Nelsonville Athens after first or get through?
No. We'll take our chances on that if I'm here first. Now, as far as the tax credits, I imagine between the folks at Stewart's and Guy, they're going to be in a race now, so, you know, because it's a competitive, competitive bid. It's not a bid, is it? It's a grant, competitive grant.
Oh, really? Oh, yeah, okay.
State is competitive, right.
Any cases? That's the only case on VZA coming out?
Yes, this will be a full agenda. There's five. I do have another one, but because of the amount of agenda on this, and it just came in yesterday as well. And I discussed this with you briefly during Milfest, the Lutheran Church owns those two homes right next to them there that they're wishing to remove and build multifamily there. And those will be Title 41s, but they weren't, they need variances first, so. So, that's why I don't, I didn't bring it in here today.
Anything else, Mr. Paskey?
That is all.
Okay. The opportunity for citizens to speak about items not covered on today's agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to address the commission? No? Okay. Our next, any other announcements or other business?
Not that I can think of.
Okay. Our next meeting will be May 7, 2015. Is there a motion for adjournment?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yee-haw.
Thank you. This concludes our meeting.